Good afternoon, I'm going to call the City Council Meeting of October 12th, 2010, to order. Will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Council Agency Member Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Self.
Here.
White.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Chair Schneider.
Here.
Okay, we have item number one.
Item number one, 2010 Annual Charitable Giving Campaign.
Mr. Armstrong or Mr. Samario, Mr. Lopez, who's in charge this year? Here we go.
Madam Mayor, Council Members, good afternoon. I'm Marcelo Lopez, I'm the Assistant City Administrator, but this year I also have the privilege of being the United Way City of Santa Barbara Campaign Chair. But I'm not alone. Bob Samario is with me, he's my co-chair, and together we've been working on this campaign, which started actually yesterday, and will run through the 11th of November. But we're not alone, Bo and I, because we also have a number of city representatives from various departments that will be working on the campaign, and they'll be introduced later on in a brief presentation. But at this point, I would like to turn it over to Bob Samario, who's going to speak to you a little bit about one of our special projects, which is the Day of Caring. Bob?
Thank you, Marcelo. Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Bob Samario, Co-Chair of the United, of the Charitable Giving Campaign. And for those of you who don't know, the Day of Caring is a one-day event that's held every year. It's sponsored by the Santa Barbara United Way, and it's where essentially people, anybody in the South Coast can volunteer their time for half a day to provide services and help out local nonprofits. There are about 55 nonprofits in this South Coast that were identified as sites, and it's really just a way for people to give back to their community. There's a lot of these nonprofits provide important services and resources to the community, and so this is their way of giving back. The event this year was held on September 25th, it was a Saturday. It was a nice warm day for everybody. And I know there was some concern about the level of participation, because with the economy being what it is, you know, sometimes people aren't able to give as much. But this year they had 1,700 volunteers, which is a lot of people. I think Joel mentioned to me that the value of those services for, by those folks for just four hours of work was, you know, in excess of $200,000. So it's really a lot of money and a lot of help. So there were a lot of local businesses that participated, but really, a lot of families came out this year. I think that's where we saw the biggest increase, in just families making their own teams and, and just helping out. So this year, they, where they always meet, they meet at the Ben Page Youth Center in Golita on Hollister, and it's, you know, I was there. It's really an impressive thing to see, this building, which is, you know, has, contains two full-court basketball courts, filled with people with T-shirts for the Day of Caring, so it's kind of a cool thing to see. The city volunteers, they were assigned to four locations, the Domestic Violence Solutions, the Botanical Gardens, Art from Scraps, and Front Country Trail Work. And that's happened, that's where I went. It was a nice toasty day, as I said, about 95 degrees, they were working clearing brush and weeds and, and all those things. And it was really, you know, a lot of work, you know, when you're using loppers over your head and all that. But it was really a lot of fun, and after three and a half, four hours of work, we're all pretty exhausted. But, you know, on the way back from, on the trail, you could see the results of your work, and you could just see how much better it looked. And for those who were either just walking or on horseback, afterward, we were treated to a complimentary lunch by the Santa Barbara Chicken Ranch, so we were all very hungry and thirsty, and we ate quite a bit of food, so that was really nice to them. So overall, great day. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joel.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council. I'm just here today representing United Way, and really, we just want to thank all of you for, once again, choosing us as the managing agency for the city's charitable giving campaign. It's really a pleasure each year for us to work with city employees to promote giving in all the departments. So just some quick facts, the campaign dates were October 11th through November 11th this year. Our campaign theme is now more than ever, because we all know that a lot of people in our community are having a really tough time right now. Last year's campaign, we had 232 donors, which was about a 25% participation rate from city employees, which is really encouraging. We had 24 departmental meetings where agency speakers came in and talked with city employees about some of the options that they have in terms of giving. And our goal for this year is to increase those numbers by 5%, both the dollar value and also the number of people participating. One thing we do want to do is really thank Marcelo and Robert, they've been really great to work with as campaign chairs. We also have a number of our campaign reps here today that wanted to be here for the kickoff, and so I'm just going to name them, and if all of you could just stand up as I say your name, we'd really appreciate it. Renee Schmidt, Linda Gunther, Steve Wiley, Betty Weiss, Turquoise Taylor Grant, Stephen Falstich, Melissa Murillo, Pat McElroy, Carolyn Dosa, Sandra Tinsley, Carlos Luna Voss, Mark Reed, Barbara Sansone, Chris Toth, Michelle Decant, Caesar Barros, James Hat-Sadakis, and Jennifer McKenzie. And then in addition to that, we also wanted to thank Tony Ruggeri and Dominique Blocker from the city TV station, who took a lot of time to put together a wonderful video for this year's campaign. So, once again, thank you all. We look forward to reaching and exceeding our goals for this year's campaign and, and doing a lot of community benefit in the process. So, thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work you do at United Way.
Madam Mayor, that concludes your presentation, thank you.
Great. Thank you, and thank you to all the staff who work together on this. It's a great way to bring the community, bring our organization together and to do some good work. Thanks. Mr. Armstrong, did you have, oh, no. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We do have public comment, and there are three speakers. We have Ruth Wilson, be followed by David Daniel Diaz, and then Kate Longstory. I have two minutes up on the podium. Good afternoon, we've missed you last four weeks.
Well, you know, I'm coming once a month now to pray. That doesn't mean I'm not praying every Tuesday and in-between times for you too. You're really on my mind, and if others in the community want to step forward at this public opinion time and pray for you, I really invite them to do so. These are stressful times. I'm really aware of the pace of our world. It's hard to catch a breath sometimes, and so much important business is on your plate. And so I turn to the Book of Psalms in the Bible. It's a great place to go when you're feeling stressed. In Psalm 62, it says, "Find rest, O my soul, in God alone. My hope comes from him. He alone is my rock and my salvation. He is my fortress; I will not be shaken." My salvation and my honor depends on God. Trust in him at all times, O people. Pour out your hearts to him, for God is our refuge. And I lift you up right now to the Lord and this entire community. Father, help us to see things your way. Help us to pause and turn to you with our requests, and to listen to your answers, which you want to give to us. Help each one of us to do our part. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Daniel, David Daniel Diaz, and then Kate Longstory.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Real quick, documentation purposes only, last semester there was a girl I was advocating for in education, and because of all the budget cuts and everything within the county, she was eliminated from Girls Inc. Down the road, Girls Inc. was, you know, replenished financially, but as a result, during this interim, she was sexually abused. And when we do slashes, especially regarding young children in the second, third grade, let's be more considerate and see about making sure that safety net is not deteriorating. Thank you very much on that one. Secondly, I've been watching these commercials about the Republicans slamming Das Williams for the medical marijuana thing. What gets me is, the Democrats didn't do 9/11, they didn't do the recession slam, and they forget so quickly, and they get on the bandwagon for the next war. Well, what bothers me is Das Williams, he's really a good guy, because he's doing what the letter of the law, the will of the people who voted the medical marijuana thing to happen, and he's just following the rules, guided by him, and he's not letting his party or religious preference dictate his policy, but he is listening to the will of the people. So, former Chair Thomas and all you other Republicans in the community, wake up, this is the real world, and I'm proud Das Williams for at least doing what he said he would do when he was elected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and then Kate Longstory is our final speaker.
Come on up, Kate.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider, and members of the Santa Barbara City Council. There is deep-seated and widespread corruption, not only in Santa Barbara County, but across the United States. Our elections have been bought by corporate interests, unions, and now we have learned, even foreign entities. Boards of supervisors, city councils and commissions, and their hired administrators have been approving illegal, unethical, uncivil, and immoral programs, policies, and practices. The school-to-prison pipeline was created by Bill Saroni and his cronies, along with DA Tom Sneddon, who persecuted Michael Jackson. Our democracy is in peril, but we, the people, are rising like bread. It doesn't matter who wins the election. The taxpayer is left unserved and dismissed by an oligarchy. I hope you are online, where there is a meeting of the minds and a grassroots movement for a glorious revolution. Dr. Lewis Andrews of YankeeInstitute.org wrote, "America's Second Civil War: The Public Employment Complex Versus the Taxpayer."
You have 10 seconds.
Jerry Spence wrote, "From Freedom to Slavery: The Rebirth of Tyranny in America. I'm readying for the Santianez School Board, which is an hour and a half from my home."
Thank you, Kate, your time's up.
To prove there is school and government corruption. Mayor Schneider, I would like you to know that you have the authority to allow me more time.
I do, but your time is now up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That says it all.
Thank you, that concludes public comment, and we move on to the consent calendar. Cindy, I believe you have some items to read.
Item number three, Adoption of Ordinance Regarding Spay and Neutering of Dogs and Cats. Recommendation that Council Adopt by Reading of Title Only and Ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, Amending the Municipal Code Concerning the City Licensing Requirements for the Keeping of Dogs and Cats Which Have Not Been Spayed or Neutered and Opposing a New Licensing Requirement for Unaltered Cats. Item number seven, Records Destruction for Airport Department. Recommendation that Council Adopt by Reading of Title Only and Resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara Relating to the Destruction of Records Held by the Airport Department and the Business and Properties Division. Item number 10, Financial Assistance to the Housing Authority for Acquisition-Rehabilitation of 2941 State Street, Including Recommendation D. That Council and the Agency Board Adopt by Reading of Title Only and Joint Resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara and the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Santa Barbara Finding that the Use of Redevelopment Agency Housing Set-Aide Funds as a Loan to the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara for Acquiring Affordable Housing Located Outside the Central City Redevelopment Project (CCRP) area at 2941 State Street Will Be of Benefit to the CCRP.
Thank you, without objection, we'll wait for the reading. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Madam Mayor, just a quick question on number three, if I could.
Okay, number three, and let's just say which one that is.
That's the, the spay-neuter ordinance, yep. Right. I had a constituent ask if they want to have "Hi, I'm Fluffy" called so-and-so my owner on their tag, if they could do it. I gather that that's something that one has to do separately on your own, is that correct?
Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, yes, that's my understanding from the animal control staff at the police department. I know in the old days, there used to be a company that the city provided, when you obtained your dog license, the city would provide you the information to purchase a separate tag with the dogs, or the pet's name and your contact information, and it was only a few dollars. And I don't know if that's, I assume that sort of thing is still available. Of course, there's no rule that says you can't have two tags on the collar, one with the dog, or the pet's name and the contact information.
I see that all the time, yeah.
Great, so it's a free-market opportunity, good. Thank you very much.
That's what you like, I know. Anything else on the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. House?
Just on item 10.
Item 10, which...
This is the Housing Redevelopment Division, Community Development Department, the Financial Assistance to Housing Authority for Acquisition-Rehabilitation of 2941 State Street. And I didn't have a concern with it, I just wanted to draw positive attention to this continued partnership we have in the, in the way that we're using redevelopment agency funds to really leverage a real magnification of the value of those funds for yet again, another project that will prove beneficial to low, for low-income housing. And I just think it deserves to be appreciated, all the hard work our staff and the Housing Authority Redevelopment Agency folks. I see Mr. Kiefer out here, and Mr. Pearson, and Mr. Fredericks. Thank you all very much for the good work.
Great. I believe it already went through Finance Committee too, which is great. Anything else on the consent calendar, or is there a motion?
Move Consent Calendar.
Okay, moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. All right. Report from the Ordinance Committee. Mr. House?
Yes, Mr. White is out of town today, and I chaired it, and you joined us on the committee.
Now I know why Mr. White should be on the ordinance.
And we are looking at the signed committee and, and a few other items in the same zone, if you will. We did move forward, reconstitution of the signed committee for efficiencies that will be effectively a temporary measure during the economic low period, changes to the expiration of approvals and time extensions on development approvals, development plan approvals, and in particular, arranging them so that it's not so complicated. Right now, the variety of approvals one might get for a particular project have different time periods, and if you were to exceed one, you might have to go back and reapply. We're going to be recommending to City Council that the longest out, the farthest out time limit on an approval becomes the effective time limit for all the approvals on a project. And that will simplify it and assist everyone, including staff and our public, in complying and not making a mistake and missing one. And then lastly, changing the terminology of preliminary approval to project design approval for ABRHLC and the Single Family Design Review Board, to really clarify what a preliminary approval is in the, in the development review process. We postponed any action on revising the regulations of the signed ordinance to a meeting on the 26th, and also, we're going to continue our discussion about zoning information report requirements and when they're due. So that's what we did today.
Thank you. Okay, item number 13.
Item number 13, Air Service Development.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsdale.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council Members. Today, we're going to focus on the airport's air service development program. Recently, we lost some service, air service that concerned citizens and council members alike, and I thought it might be useful to have some background, as well as an update on not only our air service, but kind of what, how trends are going in the United States as well. I do want to acknowledge that Airport Commissioner Bill Gilbert is joining us today in the audience, and I'll introduce our consultant when we get to his part of the presentation. So this is what we plan to cover today. If you'll bear with me, I'll give you a little bit of background on the airline industry, as well as our own air service, and factors that influence air service decisions, and then we'll get into the status of our air service and our air service development overview, and in essence, what are we doing with the loss of service. Airports have, which you probably realize, no authority to, over airlines in regards to the fares they set, their schedules, or the market entry or exit. And this is all due to the Airline Deregulation Act in 1978. Before that, the federal government basically regulated the fares and schedules and routes, and made sure that the airlines made a reasonable rate of return. And maybe they would wish they'd go back to that, since they haven't made a reasonable rate of return in recent years. However, it did take government control away from the airline industry and allowed the airlines to respond to the market. The result of that was many small airports lost air service because it was being subsidized. So the evolution of the industry since then has been quite interesting. There are 382 primary airports in the United States. If you'll notice, large hubs and medium hubs are, there are very, not that many of them, and they handle the bulk of the passengers. That's really the, the meaning of this slide. Santa Barbara Airport is a small hub airport. These are some maps that show, there are 28 large hub airports concentrated on the East Coast. You can see that the West Coast only has four large hub airports. Medium hub airports are a little bit more on the, on the West Coast, and together, they compromise 88% of total passengers. So this slide, there's small hub airports, there are not very many on the West Coast, us being one, and non-hubs. Small hub would be like Santa Barbara, going up to Oklahoma City Airport, I know Hazel, appreciate that, is also a small hub. Non-hubs would be like San Luis Obispo, Santa Maria. And between the small and non-hubs, we comprise only 11% of the total passengers, so we're really funneling into the bigger hubs. The airline industry is one that's very susceptible to the economy, whether it's good or bad, to world events, as this slide shows. The blue line are Santa Barbara passengers, and the magenta line is our US passengers. Obviously, they're on a little bit different number scale, but you can see that they pretty much track the ups and downs of recessions, which are the Rs in the bottom of the chart, but always trending up. And so that's kind of the industry that we deal with, and our downturn today will go back up and so forth. I mean, it's just proved itself over the history of the industry. Tri-County airports, we, Santa Barbara Airport comprises of 62% of the departures offered by the four airports in the tri-counties. San Luis coming in second at 28%. Daily, in the tri-counties, we offer about 2,200 seats, and we account at Santa Barbara Airport for 67% of those seats. So we are the predominant airport in the tri-counties. Currently, last, in 2009, we had 747,000 passengers, which is down in the last few years. However, this year, year-to-date, we're up 1%. We have five airlines that are currently serving our airport, with the latest addition of Frontier with service to Denver. And Frontier is a low-cost airlines and was also primarily the reason that we're up 1%, even though we had a loss of several destinations. Our five non-stop destinations go to five major hubs, so I think that is good, and from those hubs, you can get anywhere in the world. And we offer about 1,500 seats a day. This is just kind of a gee-whiz chart showing how many airlines have been in and out of our airport since 1978. After deregulation, I think everybody on the planet thought they could run an airline, and it was a good thing. Well, as you can see, in 88, most of those airlines that were in the first column, many of them went bankrupt. Some of them didn't even last the year, but some of them did continue on. And of course, as time has gone on, airlines have merged and gone out of business, and we have fewer and fewer actual choices. The airlines that are highlighted in yellow are airlines where our air service development program actually went out and tried to woo or encourage those airlines to bring service to Santa Barbara, and we were successful. So I do think that while we have no control, that we have been fairly successful in making our case to bring service to our airport. This shows for the past seven years, after 9/11, the airlines started reducing their capacity throughout the United States, reducing the number of available seats. In purple shows the number of available seats, and in the green shows how many passengers, how many seats we're filling. And we still have a little gap, although if you're flying at 6 o'clock in the morning, you would probably say, hmm, I don't think we have any capacity because we're full. But if you fly during the middle of the afternoon, you probably will see some empty seats. So we have a little bit of capacity that we can fill. I've been also asked in this discussion of losing air service, if you're losing air service, why are you building a new terminal? Well, I guess the picture is sort of obvious, we are 30% into it, and I really don't think there's any time, good time to build a terminal, since the airline industry is, does go up and down. So you can start planning it, and it may be on the peak, and by the time you construct it, it may be in a trough. And by the time you construct it, it may be in a trough, but it will go up. Our particular situation, the terminal is, was designed to meet our current needs with just a little bit of room for growth. So we are still going to use this terminal very well in terms, it's not going to be empty. Also, major capital projects take many years, as you know, from design to construction. And if you tried to build it at the peak of the airline traffic, you would never get a terminal built because the next five years, the traffic would be down and you'd be starting construction. We also got very favorable construction bid and financing, which we wouldn't have gotten had the economy not been at a lull. Factors that influence airline service decisions, it's more than just thinking we're a swell community and that we're beautiful. Profitability is at the number one on their chart. And, you know, any private business would not continue to offer a product that wasn't profitable. When the airlines are not a utility, they are a private business as well, and they need to make a profit. So they will base decisions on that. Also, aircraft availability. They may want to serve, say, Santa Barbara in the worst way. But if they don't have the right-sized aircraft available to offer that service, they can't offer it until they, at such time, they acquire those types of aircraft. Is it compatible with their network? You know, if our market doesn't, isn't, doesn't jive with where their market strategies are, then they're not going to offer service. Also, as we found out with Salt Lake City, origin and destination passengers, passengers that, they call it local passengers, that will fly here and get off at Salt Lake City and stay in that city. We didn't have a higher enough percentage as, according to Delta's business plan. We needed more. They make more money on the traveler that goes from here, say, for instance, to Salt Lake City than they do that someone that's connecting at Salt Lake and going on to New York. As you know, the further you go, the cheaper the fare. Mergers, which we'll talk about in a minute, also impact. You have two airlines that you're trying to combine. And co-chair agreements, as with SkyWest and United. United contracts with SkyWest to provide the aircraft crews and ticket agents to provide United's service here. So United tells them what the fares will be, where they're going, and what the schedules will be. So if United is not interested, for instance, in going to San Jose, that isn't in their business plan, then they're going to tell SkyWest, stop San Jose service and go here. And we'll get into that in just a moment. All right, we've had an air service development program since 1978. Probably most small airports only recently had air service development programs and maybe even medium-sized airports as well. And we identify what our service deficiencies are. We survey our business travelers to find out where they need to go and how current service is meeting their needs. We do leakage analysis to find out how many passengers are going down to the Los Angeles airports to fly and why are they doing that? And then we try and form strategies to get some of them back flying out of Santa Barbara. We also go to airline headquarters and make presentations and present our case. And then we go to air service conferences with the airlines' attendance, another opportunity to make our case. I'd like to introduce now Kevin Shore, who is the Vice President of Air Service Development for InterVista Consulting Group. He said he didn't know if this was a good thing or not, but he was the director, came into the business as a Director of Domestic Strategies and Alliances for Transworld Airlines and for the past 10 years has been doing airline and aviation industry consulting. And I will, he's really the expert on these matters. Kevin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you about air service today. So I'm with InterVista Consulting. We're a global analytic and strategic consulting firm that focuses just on the aviation industry. We work on everything except flying and fixing airplanes. We're about 100 people throughout the world. Personally, I've been working with Santa Barbara since 2007 to maintain and improve air service. Today, I'm going to talk to you briefly about the U.S. airline industry, talk about some recent air service gains and losses that I know you've seen here at Santa Barbara, talk about the air service strategic plan that the airport has for maintaining and improving air service. Then we'll talk real briefly about mergers and the potential impact on Santa Barbara. So the global airline industry is projected to generate a $10 billion profit this year, about $3.5 billion in North America. And that's a very impressive number, especially when you consider that globally, the industry lost $10 billion last year. We lost $2.7 billion here in the United States. So within the span of one year, our profitability in the global airline industry has swung by about $19 billion. And even though we're going to make $3.5 billion in North America this year, still is going to make up for the $58 billion that we've lost from 2001 to 2009. Total passengers flying in the United States from this August compared to last August were up 1%. While it's always good to see an increase, what we've seen is that we have come back from where we were before the economic downturn, but all the growth seems to have stopped there. The light at the end of the tunnel for the airlines at least is that fares are up 14%. Revenues are up 17%. But again, we think these growth trends are going to flatten out and we'll see flat growth, if any growth whatsoever, in terms of passengers, fares, and revenue going forward. So the airlines are convinced that demand for domestic air travel remains depressed. And you say, well, how can it be depressed? Load factors are high, people are flying. If we look back throughout history, the domestic passenger revenue for our airlines as a share of the U.S. gross domestic product, on average, was about 1%. So you could always multiply the gross domestic product by about 1%. That would estimate the total revenue for our domestic passengers. That ratio has fallen from 1% to 0.5% in recent years, which doesn't sound like a big number, but structurally, we have lost about $35 billion in domestic passenger revenue here in the United States. So we see because of that, that domestic capacity is growing very conservatively. From this October to last October, capacity, which is total seats in the United States, is up only about 2%. And something that's driving that is that most aircraft deliveries are actually for replacement purposes only. So Southwest, Airtran, most other airlines have an airplane coming in, that means the next day, they're retiring an airplane that they're currently flying. So there really is no opportunity for significant growth in the domestic market in the next few years. So we also see that break-even load factors, and load factors being the percentage of seats on flights on average that are filled, the break-even load factors have to exceed 75% for the airlines to make money. So at least three out of every four seats on an airplane have to be filled for the airline to make money. For those of you who remember back in the '70s and '80s, you could pretty much always count on that middle seat being open. Well, that's not the case anymore. And 75% might not sound like a high number to you, might sound like a high number. But if you think back to the oil crisis in 2008, break-even load factors on average were in the high 80%, excuse me, high 80%. And after 9/11, break-even load factors were over 90%. And I talked to some airlines in 2008 that said their break-even load factor had risen as high as over 100%. So they had to fill more than 100% of the seats to actually make money.
I was on one of those flights.
I think we've all been on some of those flights. And to compound things further, we sue that all prices are high. Are they as high as they were in 2008? No, thank goodness. But today, oil's trading at about $82 a barrel, which is higher than the airlines would like to see. And the airlines are concerned because not only is the price high right now, but they don't know where the price is going to go today, tomorrow, next year, the year after. To give you an estimate, the Air Transport Association predicts that airlines will spend $2.14 per gallon on fuel this year. That's up 27% from $1.69 last year. So now that we've talked about all the good news in the airline industry, let's talk a bit about what's happened here in Santa Barbara. We'll start with the good news. Frontier Airlines started service in the beginning of June. We've been working with Frontier Airlines for many years to start non-stop service from Santa Barbara to Denver. Some of you might be asking, well, why would you look for non-stop service on a route where we currently have service and why Frontier? Well, more, most importantly, Frontier offers more choice for our consumers. And as an airport, it's always great to look out on the tarmac and see a new tail out there. Most importantly, Frontier is a low-cost carrier, so we're going to expect lower fares. And Frontier also connects passengers to many other destinations beyond Denver, including some of the biggest markets in the United States. And for some of us who might not want to get on a 30-seat turboprop or 50-seat RJ, Frontier is flying nice, big 99-seat RJ's, which feel are actually more comfortable than some of the Boeing 737s that are flying out there right now. So Frontier tells us that they're doing very well and they're happy with the service. So as far as we know, they're here to stay for a long time. Conversely, we've had some bad news this year as well. SkyWest recently made the decision to discontinue service to San Jose. And I specifically say SkyWest because it was a SkyWest decision, not a United decision. And a few things led to that. First and foremost is low load factors. If you looked recently at the service, it was really only generating 30% to 40% load factors. So if you look over the three to four flights per day, the airline really only needed one flight to fill up an airplane. And the rest of the flights would fly empty. But what further compounded the issue is that SkyWest signed a new agreement with United that made it much more profitable for SkyWest to connect passengers to United at Denver, Los Angeles, and San Francisco. So when it came time for SkyWest to retire one of their Brazilias, they said, well, we're just flying from Santa Barbara to San Jose. We're not connecting to United. We're not making money. So that's what we're going to pull. In terms of Salt Lake City, Karen talked about this briefly. Salt Lake City actually had fairly high load factors, but the local market from Santa Barbara to Salt Lake City was rather small. And if, Delta also, over the past few months, has made announcements that they'll be retiring 50-odd regional jets in the next year. So they have to take a hard look at those markets where they don't have a large presence, where they're not making money, and discontinue that service. And as we'll talk a bit later as well, Delta is moving some of those regional jets to the Northeast because of their merger with Northwest Airlines. Last but not least, Horizon made a very painful decision to discontinue service to Sacramento. We know that it was a decision that was very hard for them to make. The corporate decision-makers had an opportunity to sell off four of their regional jets. And Horizon, as an airline, is trying to get rid of all regional jets to fly with -8 Q400 turboprops. So when they had an opportunity to sell four regional jets, they went ahead and did that. And at the same time, they had to look, well, where are we going to cut service? And at that time, Santa Barbara, Sacramento had just become profitable, but since its inception, had not been profitable. So the corporate decision-makers looked at that and said, well, that's a route that we're going to have to cut. It also doesn't feed our partner, Alaska Airlines, at LA, Portland, and San Francisco, excuse me, Seattle. So in many of these cases, in some of these cases, we know the demand is there. We're talking to the airlines literally on a weekly basis about reinstating some of the service. There is some interest, and we do think over time, something will happen. But let's talk more generically about Santa Barbara and what the airport is doing to replace lost service. First and foremost, we have constant communications with carriers via email and phone. I don't think a week goes by where myself or Terry is not in contact with an airline to either make sure they're happy with their current service to the airport, to make sure they're not going to make any schedule changes, and to see if there's any potential interest in some of the routes that we've just talked about. The airport also helps the airlines by marketing their service within Santa Barbara and within the tri-county area. So when certain airlines say, we're having trouble getting people from this zip code or this area, can you help us market in that area? And the airport does so. Also, when new services started, the airport rolls out a very extensive marketing campaign to educate the community about this new service, why it's useful, where they can go with it, and so on and so forth. We do attend air service development speed dating conferences. And what this is, it's actually, the airlines all have tables and airports schedule 20 to 30-minute meetings with them. And every 20, 30 minutes, you get up and you go to another table. And these are great conferences where we could sit down with an airline and say, are you happy with your service? This is what's going on in the community that you probably don't know. And they probably don't know because airlines serve upwards of hundreds of communities and they can't keep track of what's going on in each city. So we have those opportunities to educate many different airlines in one setting about the market. And then talk to those airlines about potential opportunities as well. And it's conferences like that, we're talking with Frontier and talking with other airlines that new service has started. Should an airline be interested in what we have to say? They then invite us to their headquarters, where we sit down and we talk about the demographics of the Santa Barbara community, the local businesses, Santa Barbara tourism. And then we present a business case for new air service to a new destination or increase air service on an existing route. We've also done a lot of work over the past few years to develop our partnerships with the two chambers of commerce, with the Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission, with local companies and local travel agencies to get them involved in air service development. In fact, we've even gone as far as having Kathy Janega Dykes from the CVB accompany us to a headquarters meeting because we know an airline was specifically interested in learning about the tourism dynamics here in Santa Barbara. And last but not least, the airport does work with us to just help, to help understand the air service market. And there are different data sets that we look at and different research that we can do to help understand what are some of the best opportunities for new air service here. So in terms of our strategic plan, what is the airport trying to do on a week-to-week, day-to-day basis from an air service perspective? What are they trying to accomplish? First and foremost, the most important thing is maintaining our current service to these five destinations. And again, we're talking with airlines on a regular basis to make sure they're happy with their service, to make sure that they won't make any unexpected service changes without telling us. And then, once we've done that, we then talk to airlines about replacing recently lost service to San Jose, Salt Lake City, Sacramento, and other routes that we've lost over the years as well. And for those of you who have flown from Santa Barbara to the East Coast, you know it can be somewhat of a frustrating experience. You know, you have to connect over certain hubs, which you might not like to do. So we're also talking to airlines as much as we can about new service to other connecting hubs that will help get you to the East Coast more easily. We're also looking to increase the presence of low-cost carriers. Low-cost carriers help lower fares, which helps generate demand. The low-cost carriers are the ones who are expanding more than the network carriers. So there are some opportunities with some low-cost carriers that we are pursuing. Reducing passenger leakage to other airports, this is something that Karen touched on before. If you were to draw a one-hour drive radius around the Santa Barbara Airport, we would consider that our natural catchment area. Well, right now, about 25%, only 25% of those passengers are originating their trips out of the Santa Barbara Airport. 75% of those passengers, which are our natural passengers, are using other airports. 49% of them are using Los Angeles International. So we are working day and night to bring those passengers into Santa Barbara. And we're hoping that with a new terminal, we're hoping that with increased air service, we're hoping that with low-cost carrier options like Frontier, we're better able to do that. Most importantly, we also want to make sure that we maintain good working relationships with the airline network planners and the schedulers. Notice, I didn't say the CEOs. It's the airline, airline network planners and schedulers that are looking at the lowest levels of data, looking at the performance metrics, looking at the economies, and saying, we think Santa Barbara makes a sense for us to fly. And 99% of the time, this is where new service opportunities come from. And then, of course, promoting the community and corporate involvement in air service development. It's one thing for us to sit in front of an airline and tell them that the community and the local corporations are interested in your air service, but when they hear it directly from those folks, it has a much bigger impact. So that's our strategic plan and what we're doing. Let's talk a bit about airline mergers and the potential impact on Santa Barbara. Delta-Northwest combined recently, so they now have an active fleet of 740 airplanes. And what we see here is an opportunity for these two airlines to exploit each other's strengths. Delta has a big presence in New York City, in the Southeast, Latin America to Europe. Northwest has a huge presence in Asia. They also have good connecting hubs at Detroit and Minneapolis. So the big impact has been that Delta decided to move regional jets to Detroit and to the Northeast and to build up New York and Washington. So that's the point where they looked at Santa Barbara, Salt Lake City, and said, we think that moving those RJ's to the Northeast makes more sense. Looking at United and Continental, again, this is an exercise in exploiting each other's strengths, which combined have an, will have a fleet of 697 airplanes. United, very strong in Asia, along the West Coast, in Washington DC and Chicago. Continental, very strong in New York City, in the South, to Europe, Latin America, and the Caribbean. Now, with United being the dominant carrier here in Santa Barbara, we hope that down the road, and hopefully not too the road, and hopefully not too far down the road, that there will be opportunities to exploit that strength and connect Santa Barbara to some of Continental cities as well. Very recently, you may have heard that Southwest has announced its intent to acquire Airtrain. Some of us were caught by surprise by this announcement. But what this essentially is about is four things. It's about increased access to New York City's LaGuardia Airport, where Southwest has a very minor presence, increased access to Boston Logan's Airport, again, where Southwest has a very minor presence, increased access, or any access whatsoever, to Washington's Reagan National Airport, but then Atlanta. And Southwest could have probably always gone into Atlanta and gotten one gate or two gates, had 15 to 20 flights, but there's no way that they could compete as a very small number three to the behemoths that are Delta and Airtrain in that market. So now they come in as a strong number two. And we've been talking to Southwest for years. We continue to talk to Southwest. We continue to tell them about the market. If you look at what Southwest is doing nowadays, they're focusing on larger cities. They're not looking right now at airports and communities of this size. They also need to be able to sustain 10-plus daily flights on 737s, which is a lot of capacity to have to fill up. But we continue to talk to them. If their strategy should change, they know about Santa Barbara. We'll continue to tell them about the opportunities here. Should they acquire different aircraft types? Should they keep the smaller Airtrain airplanes? Should they change their operating model? It definitely could become a possibility. And with that, I thank you very much and look forward to your questions.
Questions. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you. That was really interesting. In terms of potential market, you know, we've got an hour circle around us, which represents what, about 220,000 people? Is that correct?
I think it's more than that.
More than? Okay, I'm not sure what numbers you're using.
Yeah.
Who's our competition when we go to one of these airlines, when they're looking at us all compared to, I don't know, El Paso or something? What is it?
Well, your competition are the other airports that could derive passengers from that catchment area.
Right.
So it's Santa Maria, it's San Luis Obispo, it's Oxnard, it's LAX, it's Burbank.
Right, but those are not direct competition with us as an airport. They're other areas. Are they are direct competition?
Yeah, absolutely.
They would drive to Burbank from here instead of leaving from here.
Yeah. So for a lot of airlines that currently get some of your passengers at Burbank or Los Angeles, they'll tell us, oh, we are getting your passengers. Thank you.
Good.
Ms. South?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My thoughts have been that it's, are we competitively charging the airlines so that they can charge rates that are competitive with, you know? I think the only reason people drive out of town is because they're getting a cheaper rate for their flights. So does our pricing to the airlines have any impact on that?
It definitely does. And the airlines, to some extent, recognize that Santa Barbara as a whole is a more affluent community than other parts of the United States. So there's no question that the airlines do charge a bit of a premium for flying out of Santa Barbara. But that's why we're trying to pursue airlines like Frontier, which will come in and bring down those average fares. Because as they do that, all of the other airlines will look to match those fares.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman South? In terms of airport charges to the airlines, we're kind of on the lower end of the scale for airports our size. And even with the new terminal, we built it at, or designed it at a certain cost per in plane passenger to the airline with their full knowledge. So we'll still be in the middle of the pack and not excessive rates.
Yeah, for eight years, I traveled extensively. I spent more time in an airplane than I did at home per month.
Sorry.
And, but I always got my flight early enough and flew out of Santa Barbara because of the four hours I'd end up driving and all the hassle with that. So maybe we ought to market that to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. House.
I appreciate the presentation. Last month and this month, I mentioned to the Downtown Organization the value of their input into this conversation and also to a couple of the business associations that I attend. And Kathy Janega Dykes is there at each of those. And I just had a strong feeling that we need to really do maybe even a better job of getting direct input from our business community, from the university, from, you know, the major employers in the area, and the, and of course, our hospitality industry. And I, and I don't know exactly what form that would take to be as effective as it could be. As I was leaving the meeting this morning at the Downtown Organization, having mentioned today's agenda item, one fellow came up to me at the end and said, please make sure to make a pitch for more affordable flights to San Francisco. Well, you know, it costs a lot to go from Santa Barbara directly to San Francisco. You know, go to LA, and it's just really cheap. I mean, and, and it just always has bothered me, because I travel a lot, that it was, it's so much more from Santa Barbara. And he also, along with another person, recollected how wonderful it was when we had the direct flights, I think it was Horizon, to Portland.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And what that meant, because there's a real affinity between those two communities. Of course, then that was a gateway to Alaska and to Seattle and all the rest. And then, and for other reasons, I think he suggested that we should get that Las Vegas flight back. But I don't know if we ever had it. That was Santa Maria that was getting the direct flight. No, it was us?
No, we had it as well.
Okay. So, but it was interesting. It's not just a wish list. I mean, there's got to be some ground of accuracy to our wish list so that once we do get this, we can really do something with it. So what can we do better to get, get the polling or the information from our business community? What are we doing now and what can we do better?
We're currently working through the Chambers of Commerce, through the CVB. We recently had a forum with many high-tech companies.
At Citrix, I believe.
At Citrix, correct. Citrix Online.
Okay.
Because we're focused, not focusing, but we're trying to do whatever possible to reinstate that San Jose service as quickly as possible. In fact, we have meetings with four different charter companies tomorrow morning.
Agreed.
To talk about the potential. And it's, you know, we know the passengers are there, but we also need an airline, like Karen said before, where it makes sense for them from a corporate perspective to fly Santa Barbara, San Jose. There's no question that we can't fill up maybe a 50-seat RJ once a day between Santa Barbara to San Jose, maybe twice a day. But we need an airline who's willing and able to do it.
Okay.
And we're always happy to work with more individuals, with more groups that can give us more information to take to the airlines. And we always do ask that those groups come directly through us rather than talking to the airlines directly, so we can translate into what the airlines are really curious to hear about.
You know, there's a sort of related thing. The way we all talk about this is our accessibility to other parts of the country and, you know, and yet, Santa Barbara is a pretty incredible destination.
Yes, it is.
And I remember a few years ago, I took a trip down to Brazil and ended up in this little community on the seacoast for the latter part of my trip. And it was amazing because there were very few Americans there, number one. There were lots of French people and Germans. And as it turned out, they had developed some amazing relation. It was very similar to Santa Barbara in its, in its aspect. And they had developed some arrangement where, I guess, some parts of France through, I don't know, Virgin Airways, one of them, had developed direct flights to this little community from all the way over in Europe, and it became a very popular destination. And it was like, it sort of, like, how did, it's like pulled out of the air that they made that relationship, kind of like we have our Sister Cities program, sort of like that. But it was, so anyway, here's my idea. We need one of those, so we can call this Santa Barbara International.
Okay.
But I think that, but I really think that there's, there may be some value in that kind of targeted marketing. I mean, we, I mean, there's probably someplace, Kyoto or someplace, that really thinks, once they find out about us beyond the TV program, that Santa Barbara is the hotspot to recreate. And we, is that even, I mean, am I just crazy with this idea? But I've seen it work elsewhere. Can we market that way to the world and become a destination like that?
I have two comments. First of all, an aircraft from Kyoto probably couldn't land or depart from the Santa Barbara Airport, so right then and there, that doesn't really become possible.
Okay, closer to home.
But Europe has a very strong charter market. There are hundreds of airlines in Europe that sell prepackaged, prepackaged airfare, hotel, everything, top to bottom, in all different parts of Europe. And it's just not something that's as strong here in the United States. So there are a lot of those different companies. So they have that relationship, but that nonstop service is most likely essentially all paid for and guaranteed by the tour company.
As part, like packages.
Right, where the tour company has said, either we pay for the whole airplane, or B, we'll pay for 80% of the seats.
Okay. I'm sort of thinking from the, the marketing economic stimulus benefit to our communities.
But to address some of your other comments, we know that there is demand from here to Portland. We know that there is demand from here to Las Vegas. We've talked to airlines about it. We've talked to many different airlines about it. And again, it has to make sense for that airline. At the time that Horizon pulled down Portland, they had made a strategic decision to significantly reduce capacity at Portland. So there are a number of markets besides Santa Barbara that lost that service as well. In terms of Las Vegas, we know the passengers are there. The airlines know that if they fly it, people probably will come. So again, it's finding the right airline that has airplane time that's willing to do it. If you look at Vegas over the past few years, they have lost significance amount, a significant amount of air service with US Airways closing the Nighthub there. So we know the demand's there. We just need an airline to say, okay, we have the airplane, we're ready and willing to do it.
Well, thank you very much for doing this work. I know that I've been flying to places in the middle of nowhere, like Montana and Wyoming and on business, and it's been amazing at how easy it is to get there. I mean, to fly to either into Salt Lake, which we can't do now, but to Denver.
Right, for Denver, yes.
And then take the little puddle jumper out in the middle of nowhere.
Yes.
But when I'm there doing my business, I have often commented to people who really feel themselves very isolated from the rest of the world, that it's literally a commute amount of time to get. I mean, I will leave work there at maybe 5:30 or 4:30 in the afternoon, and I'll be back here in Santa Barbara by 9 o'clock or 9:30 or something. And it's just incredibly easy. And so it makes me think somehow our marketing needs to touch these remote destinations and hook them to the hubs coming this way. So.
It's a question of available resources.
Mr. Williams.
I just want to put in an extra plug for the, but I think you're aware of this. I just wanted to repeat that need for the long-term economic development of this community. San Jose flights is a really important, it's something far beyond just the demand and the convenience. It's, it's something that for us to continue to have high-tech companies is vital. And it seems that, from what you've explained, that if it was one or two flights a day, San Jose would be profitable, Sacramento was, you know, became profitable.
Right.
Vegas, maybe profitable. So what, so essentially, it's finding the companies that have excess small airplanes. Is that essentially what you're, what you're looking for?
Basically.
Because the profitability is there, but just it's not as profitable as other markets for some of the.
Well, whenever you're talking about a market that's been discontinued, you have to start off on the defensive and explain to the airline why that service was discontinued. And then it becomes an uphill battle somewhat to get them comfortable with the fact that it makes sense for them to take the risk. And we're talking about millions of dollars of risk in this capital asset that could be deployed on any route within the country. So I can say to an airline, we know we have this many people per day each way flying to San Jose, Las Vegas, and Portland. Can I guarantee that airline, and if they start service once a day with whatever airplane, they'll get all of those people? Not exactly, there's always a risk assumed. So it's getting the aircraft, it's making sure that, an airline, which are all risk-averse nowadays, that they want to take this risk and try out this venture. And on the San Jose front, I can promise you that we're in touch with airlines on a weekly basis. We're trying to reinstate that service. There are a few nibbles, there's some interest, they realize the community of interest between the two cities. And I can definitely say that the airport understands the long-term economic benefit and we could say economic risk of not having that service back.
Thank you. I'll also put in a plug to San Jose. When, I mean, the other thing is, San Francisco, it's so cost prohibitive.
Yes.
From here to there. And is part of your marketing to San Jose also to those who might want to end up in San Francisco? Because you can take now the Capitol Corridor? Or, you know, you can get on a train in San, I don't know how easy it is from the airport to the train, that, but if there's something like that, because I know they're expanding BART and, you know, all those kind of things that you can actually get into the Bay Area from San Jose, that that might be another way to try to show the number of people interested, not just for San Jose, which is important enough.
Right.
But then also to San Francisco. Because I've driven to Burbank a number of times to fly to Oakland to get to San Francisco because I saved $350 doing it. You know, so that, that cost, you know, comparison is interesting. The other thing is, and myself alluded to it as well, I've been in situations where I may look compared between Santa Barbara, which I always prefer because it's just so much more convenient, versus LAX. And sometimes between the schedule or the cost, if I wanted to do a last-minute flight, it's huge. But I forget until afterwards, oh, but then there's the cost of either getting the Airbus or paying for my car at, you know, rental for X amount of days, or the extra time and the traffic. Is part of our marketing to that 100-mile, you know, radius and the leakage or whatever we're calling it, you know, including what the full cost of, you know, you see, because you look at just the fare at LAX to your final destination and sometimes forget those extra costs. That wouldn't be the case if you left from Santa Barbara.
Madam Mayor, yes, that is part of our, our marketing that we do. And if you look on our website, we still have the flight calculator. Look on our website and it'll, you fill in your information and it'll compare flying out of Santa Barbara versus LA, considering having to take transportation down to Los Angeles.
Well, I would not think to look at the Santa Barbara Airport website to make that determination. So some other, if there's some other way to, I, you know, I mean.
We do it in our advertising as well.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we, you know, that's what we have to offer is convenience and, you know, saving time. So that is our marketing strategy.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll also just add a plug to Sacramento, because while I have the mic and you're standing right here, I mean, that I know is popular. Whenever we've been up, I've been up there, it seems to be a very popular service, especially on a Thursday or, I don't know, but every day, because everyone has to do stuff up in Sacramento certain times a year. So anything else? We didn't have any public speakers, no. Thank you very much. And I was at the Citrix meeting and appreciate whatever we can do as a community, get other people involved, our own office, you know, to help you bring more business to the airport. We'd be happy to do that.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item number 14.
Item number 14, contract for construction of the Jake Boisel multipurpose pathway.
Great. I'm really pleased to see this one come finally. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to introduce Brian Demore, supervising civil engineer, who is the leader on this project. And the focus of this presentation really will be about the description of the non-responsive bid. And right now, I'd like to turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Pat. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. Yes, as Pat mentioned, the purpose of this administrative item is to discuss the reason why our staff's recommendation is to reject the initial low bid and instead award to the second low bidder. And before we get into the details of why that recommendation is being made, I would like to just give a very brief description of the project. So the project is named in memory of Jake Boisel, who was hit by a car while biking to school on Cai Real in September 2006. And in response to that, city public works staff began working with the Boisel family. And Karen, I believe, is here. I want to thank her for her support of the project. We also worked with the local school districts in the area, and we submitted an application for federal safe routes to school funding for an off-street multipurpose path, providing an alternative to Cai Real. And the grant was approved by Caltrans in June 2007, and it provides funding at 100% for both design and construction costs. So it's a great deal for the, the city to get an infrastructure improvement at 100% funding. The project consists of a new path beginning immediately east of St. Vincent's Bridge and continuing over 900 feet east, connecting with an existing path that runs north to Verano Drive at Lockhartina Road. So as a federally funded highway, as a federally- So, as a federally funded, as a federal highway administration-funded project, FHWA, administered through Caltrans, the successful low bidder is required to meet disadvantaged business enterprise, or DBE, program requirements. So, lots of acronyms here, FHWA and DBE. The DBE program is a legislatively mandated United States Department of Transportation program that applies to federal aid highway dollars expended on federally assisted contracts issued by USDOT recipients such as state transportation agencies, which here in California is Caltrans. So, we've been working with Caltrans on this, and the DBE program requires that each project have a, what they call it UDBE, it's Underutilized Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Goal. So, that's a percentage of the contracts, the percentage of the subcontracted work that's given to these underutilized disadvantaged business enterprises. So, a lot of, it's a lot of information, and this is all mandated through, federally mandated, and we work with Caltrans on this. So, there, in the, in the packet that you received, there's an attachment that describes a whole list of requirements under this DBE program. I'm not going to go through all of them. If there's questions, we can talk about that after. But, what Caltrans has done to assist the local agencies and the bidders is they've provided a form which needs to be included in the bid. And in filling out that form, the contractor is basically documenting that they've made a good faith effort to find and utilize these DBE subcontractors. So, this project was advertised, starting on August 25th, and the bids opened on September 14th. And Talcal Engineering from Canoga Park was the initial apparent low bidder. So, that was received through the purchasing office, and public works staff reviewed their proposal and all of the supporting documentation. And all, all that Talcal included with their bid were copies of faxes sent to three potential subcontractors, none of which, it turns out, were DBEs. And they did not fill out the required good faith effort form. So, based on that review, staff determined that their bid was, was non-responsive, it was incomplete. I worked with them to try to get the materials that we needed, and they, they did not, they weren't able to turn it all in. So, based on that, we moved on to the second low bidder, which was Shaw Contracting, or, yeah, Shaw Contracting, and they're from Goleta. And we went through, just like we did with the Talcal bid, and reviewed all of their documentation to see if they met the, the DBE program requirements. And they indeed, indeed did complete the good faith effort. And based on that, it's staff's recommendation to award the contract to Shaw and to reject the low bid of Talcal. If there's any questions. Yeah, we, we did notify Talcal that, that that was staff's determination and that there would be a council meeting on October 12th, which is today, and that they were, this was their opportunity to contest that determination. I don't believe they're here today.
Okay. Question, myself.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I worked for a minority contractor, and I'm going to give you a scenario and see if this might work into it. You needed to apply for small business minority status every year, and that you could only apply 30 days prior to the expiration. But, the normal turnaround time to be re-qualified was six to eight months. Were these people ever qualified to be a minority? And was that kind of paperwork bureaucratic holdup? Or, were they not qualified at all? Do you know that?
As far as I know, they're not currently qualified. I don't know what their history of past qualification might be. We have a website that's provided to us from Caltrans, where we can go online, and they update it daily. And I don't know what the procedure is, if you were qualified and something, either it just lapses and you need to be re-qualified. I'm not sure the specifics, the mechanics of that.
This only lapsed because of the bureaucratic paperwork that, you know, the company ownership didn't change, nothing changed. And so, I'm not going to disagree with your recommendation, but I hope in good faith you would sort of investigate the background of whoever's not qualified. Were they ever, you can call the state and find out if it's just their application is in a mountain of paperwork. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a public speaker of these questions. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Has the city ever dealt with Talcal before? Have they ever done any other work for us?
Yes, they were awarded a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Project, I believe, in March of this year for access ramps on the east side.
Uh-huh. It just, it's, I mean, I'm sure things happen like this all the time. It just seems unusual that a, that a contractor would completely miss filling out a form that was necessary for the bid. Does that seem kind of unusual to you, or?
Well, that contract was not a FHWA-funded project.
Sure.
It did not have these requirements.
But, I imagine since it was, surely it must have had some ADA nexus. I'm sure there were other forms that they had to fill out. Does this, I guess what I'm asking is, does this happen very often, that someone just completely misses filling out a form that's part of the, the bid packet?
It, it happens more regularly than we would like it to happen, unfortunately.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to add, in this bidding environment, when you have 17 bidders and it's very competitive, it seems to happen more often than normal.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Wiley.
If I could add, because I've, I've worked with public works in this, it was actually much more than just failing to fill out a form. Part of this is a real good faith effort at outreach, initial, to actively solicit subcontractors that are DBEs. And that there was apparently a real failure to do that outreach upfront. And more of what we saw was really sort of trying to explain it after the fact, but the explanation really didn't document any outreach effort. So, there's, there is a form, and then if you don't get actual DBEs bidding as subcontractors, then you document the good faith, good faith outreach effort. And my understanding is Talcal failed on both counts here.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Thank you, Mr. House, and then we'll go to public comment.
Okay. Just a real quick question. But, but it's pretty clear to me that Talcal did not file a bid protest. In other words, that once this was pointed out to them, it was clear to them, obviously. And they, they didn't protest the decision, and they're not here today to argue against the recommendation. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. And by the way, I just have to say, I'm very enthused about this project, so maybe we'll get a chance to make a motion.
Okay, I got the clue. Okay. We have, we do have Alex Pujot who'd like to speak. I also want to acknowledge Karen Boisel, who's here. I don't know if you'd like to say anything? No? Okay, I really appreciate you being here today.
Hi, good afternoon. I have really no information about this contract, I don't know anything about it. I just want to thank the people responsible for making this project a reality. This is a very emotional issue for many of us. I think we remember clearly what happened a few years ago, in an afternoon, in the morning, not very different from this morning, with a bright sun, very tragic. Please expedite this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that closes public comment.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add, in follow-up with Alex's comment, is that as part of the people that were important to make this project happen, Drew Van Hingle and Jessica Grant of our Transportation Division really reached out with the community, with the grant process, and they are to be commended and acknowledged as part of this, to make this reality.
Great. And it's just fantastic that we got the federal grant for this to make it happen, and it's already been four years, so it's, time is ticking away here. Mr. Williams.
Well, I was both going to say that staff has made the right call here. It still looks like it's below what you estimated that we would have to spend, so it's still a bargain. Ends up being a local contractor, which I think is always a good bonus, that, that our monies are actually going to employ local people in these jobs. And that, this is of course, just an important project for, you know, for people that are biking to La Colina or Bishop Diego, or any number of the elementary schools north of the freeway, this is an important, safe connection. And I really respect the work that staff has done on this. I really respect the fact that Ms. Boisel has had the courage to come here and be with us today. And we should pass this, and I'd make the motion, but we'll leave it for Grant.
We'll leave that for Mr. House. Mr. House, you called it.
That was very nice, thank you. It's very nice. You know, I just, I just want to say to Jim and Karen Boisel, to the family, the best we can do is a fitting tribute to a wonderful young guy, and just hopefully this will really make it safer for kids in the future to just bike on over there to school and just have a great day. And that's the way it should have been, and this will make it that possible for, for others as well in a safe way. I move that we reject the apparent low bid from Talcal Engineering, award a contract with Shaw Contracting, authorize Public Works Director to exit, execute a contract, and approve the expenditures that are in their staff report, and authorize the general services managers to issue a purchase order. Second.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Just a clarification. I'm trying to see, does this, on the map, my reproduction here isn't very clear, it's completely off of any roadway, is that right? It's off San Marcos Pass, it's off Kyrielle, it's on easement here or something?
Yes, that's correct. It's between the.
I can't hear you, sorry.
That's correct. It's within the city and Caltrans right of way.
Okay.
Off the street.
All right, great. And it's, runs all the way from, I mean, this reproduction is hard to see. It goes south and then turns west?
Or it goes east and turned north, depending on which way you go.
Yeah, well, depends which way you're going, that's right.
Depending on your starting point.
Yes.
We consider the starting point at the St. Vincent's Bridge, and then it goes east, connecting with an existing path.
Nice.
The existing path is the north-south section.
Got it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, that passes as you manage to. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Okay, we have a closed session. Item number 15.
Item number 15, conference with labor negotiator.
Okay, and we won't be reporting out from that, so we're going to adjourn to Monday, October 18th, 2010, at 1:30 at the property located at 903 West Mission Street. It's a site visit for an appeal.